Julie, if I don't remember tomorrow, text me and I'll email or I'll respond to an email. I wrote it down, but I'm not going to look at this file no more. Hey, Lesley. Pretty good.
Hey.
It's six?
Uh, yeah, it's six.
That one's off. What's it say on the computer?
It's six. Well, you're fine.
It is six?
Five fifty-eight.
Five fifty-eight?
I got six oh one.
That's what I have, too. We need to be on Apple time.
Huh?
We need to be on Apple time. Windows is two minutes late. Yours says six.
Six oh two, right?
Mine says six oh two. Yeah. We'll split the difference. We can...
So we lost two minutes. At six o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our December 2nd Select Board Meeting. And I think we have everybody identified that's visiting with us on our virtual world. Can everybody out there hear us okay? Audio is good? Everything's fine? Great. We have our... There's three Select Board members here with us: Lee Gustafson, Jeff Holden, and myself, and we have two of us online, and it's Lee Dakin and Heather Chase. And our first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our November 18th Select Board Meeting, and I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I don't know that I got a copy of the minutes.
What's that, Lee?
I don't know that I got a copy of the minute. Oh, wait. Yes, I did. Sorry.
They're in there. Heather is the motion, and Lee Dakin is the second. Any changes, corrections, omissions, errors on the minutes?
Page three. Five, four, five. Put the pair back down on the speed limit number seven, and mine, mine, just a self.
Page three. Page three.
Any other corrections, any other changes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes with that correction, please say aye.
Aye.
Nobody opposed? All set with that. Next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there is someone here that would like to speak to the board regarding a matter that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Lesley? Kirby, can you let her slide over towards the microphone? Go ahead, Lesley.
Okay. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Good evening, Select Board and community members. My name is Leslie Thorson, and I'm here tonight to comment on a way to move forward with the Chester Police Policy and Procedures and to make those available to the public. As was noted in the minutes of the last Select Board Meeting, the current Chester Police Policy and Procedures are being passed up to Trevor Whipple, a former Chief of Police, now employed by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. I want to remind the citizens of our town that the Vermont League of Cities and Towns is a member organization whose main focus is to prevent lawsuits against municipalities. The Executive Director of Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns is a lawyer, and there are many lawyers on the staff. This is not a citizen rights organization. Trevor Whipple has a long history of law enforcement. This past year, the Governor of our state passed an executive order which states, "On or before December 1st, 2020, the Commissioner of the Department of Safety, in consultation with the Office of Attorney General's Division of Human Rights and Community Representatives, shall recommend to the Governor one or more models of civilian oversight of law enforcement and develop a statutory framework for the consideration of the Governor. Any such statutory framework shall include provisions designed to create a civilian oversight board." Based on this executive order and a state law I will refer to in a moment, I am coming to the Select Board tonight to propose the creation of a Police Oversight Advisory Board. The purpose would be to review the policies and procedures and to make sure that the citizens of our town have input and oversight. This is particularly important now as the new facility is going to have a holding cell. At the present time, there are no state laws that pertain to a holding cell. There must be local policy and procedures for the use of this cell. Why and how long will a person be in there? What if there's a medical emergency? Who will be available to monitor the cell? Will it be permissible to shove a person into the cell with handcuffs behind their back, like in the disturbing video of the Rutland Incident? The review of that incident was incomplete as there were not enough cameras or audio. This is a serious concern. Before this is built, has there been due diligence in the design of this holding cell? There are very particular state-of-the-art designs that, if not put in place here, could result in a tragedy. An investigation would be impaired and inconclusive if there's not video footage from every angle as well as audio. The other purpose of the Police Advisory Board would be to review citizen concerns and complaints. The Vermont State Constitution Title 20, VSA 2401, states, "E, civilian review, provides for review of officer discipline by civilians, which may be a Select Board or other elected or appointed body, at least for the conduct required to be reported to the Council under this subchapter A, B, and C, which were the felonies and misdemeanors. All other citizen concerns not arising to the level of felony or misdemeanor, such as code of conduct during a traffic stop or any other police contact that is not a felony or misdemeanor, could be reviewed by the Advisory Board with the findings going to the Town Manager and Chief of Police. Citizens may feel more comfortable coming to the Advisory Board with citizens' concerns. Additionally, the Governor's executive order stated, "The process of investigating improper conduct allegations must be easily accessible and as transparent as possible, while protecting the privacy of both the accused and the complainant. Investigations must have swift and consistent outcomes and include community oversight." So, to summarize, I am asking the Town of Chester's Select Board members to place the topic of the formation of a Citizen Advisory Board to the Chester Police Department on the agenda. This board will create transparency and citizen input for town policing, policies, and procedures, as well as be able to review citizen concerns and complaints in police encounters in the Town of Chester. Does anyone have any remarks?
Excuse me?
Does anyone have any remarks?
Well, under citizens' comments, we're really not going to get into it and discuss it and stuff. That's a lot to take in what you gave us here, and I appreciate the information that you had there. But hopefully you could drop off a copy and leave it with Julie, and she can give everybody, all the board members, a copy of that to go over it and stuff. And we will take it up into consideration and read it and get into it a little more. But at this point, citizens' comments, it's just for people to speak regarding an issue that is not on the agenda. And so we're really not at liberty to start discussing this or taking any action or movement along these lines. But I definitely appreciate the information, and we will take it into consideration.
It would be very, very proactive. This is the way it's going.
There's a lot of information there. I would love to sit down and read it and go over it and, you know, take a look at it and get in depth a little bit. It's hard when it all comes out.
No, no, I understand that, but I just want to make sure that this policy and procedure wasn't going to just like go away till we get a new facility and... So, thank you.
Thank you, Lesley. Go ahead, Heather.
Can I request that a copy of what Leslie read is given to us in our next packet?
What I just had said, Heather, that we all get a copy, all the Select Board members get a copy of this, so we could read it and take a look at all the information that's in it. Yes, I agree with you. Yep. All right, Lesley. Are there any other citizens' comments in our virtual world? Anywhere? All right, hearing none, we'll go on to old business. I'm sorry. I hear a voice, but I'm not sure where it's coming.
Mute, mute the library, please.
Can we ask who that is that's on that just says library?
Ask which one?
Um, the library. It doesn't say who it is. It just says library.
On our Zoom meeting panel, we have a picture of the Whiting Library. Can someone there please identify who's there? All right, thank you, Deirdre. We just have to have the information for our minutes for people that are attending the meeting and stuff. Thank you. So we're under old businesses at this point. Julie, want to take us through the old business?
There's not a lot to update. Leslie left, but those policies and procedures have been sent to the league. That is what was advised by legal counsel for the town, Jim Carroll. So that was our first step. Part of that process is he will be recommending a policy for the holding cell and the processing portion of the new building. But I... Leslie left, so I will email her that information so that she knows. The... I never did hear from Mark Pickering from V Trans, but Jeff was down there the other day. They have filled in the potholes, and there are some barricades that they're putting up in that area so trucks cannot park there. So I didn't hear back, but they're taking action.
They already have posts and the ground reflectors in that section.
Perfect. So posts are already in. So they have taken action to... That will hopefully solve that issue.
Great.
Unless they run over them. They're about six inches from the sidewalk on that side, so they'll either park on the sidewalk or they'll run over them, so.
That was getting ugly over there, for sure.
It was getting ugly over there.
Yeah, correct.
And that's all I had for old business. There's not a lot of developments on... In this past 10 days.
Any Select Board members have any old business that they would like to discuss or concerns about? Heather, Lee, no?
Well, I would just like to say, you know, leaving right here on Grafton Road, that the sooner we can get some type of speeding or signage that tells people what the real speed is, because coming down, coming north from Grafton on that road, it was at least 50 miles an hour with log trucks going by today in my... in front of my house.
Speed limit's posted at 30, though.
I know it is. So I'm looking forward to the time when we can start recognizing that and trying to help people understand that the speed isn't what they're saying it is. Even going south on Grafton Road, they're going above 30 miles an hour. And I know this is on the agenda for the future to see about responding to the speed limit concerns on Grafton Street going south and now going north. So I just wanted to just let you know that it's not getting any... They're not keeping within the speed limit.
And to make matters worse, the state has put down that we are now, again, have to hold off on routine traffic stops. So we can no longer just stop speeders because of COVID. The Governor put that order out to police departments. So we're back where we were. So all the speed enforcement that the police department had started to do, they now cannot just sit and run radar.
I wish they had done that in a more quiet way as opposed to announcing it to the whole state, because it kind of gives everybody just like a carte blanche. Not that most people are going to do it, but some people are.
No, I've seen it. I stopped a guy this weekend that was... He was speeding.
Because of COVID.
But...
They don't want officers doing routine stops. I'm sorry, Jeff.
Go ahead, Jeff.
And everybody that comes up here knows it, too, because I had one blow right by me, an obvious police cruiser, speeding on Elm Street. And so I followed him, and he blew through the stop sign out here in front of the town hall. I did stop him and give him a ticket. Because if they think they can just completely ignore it, you know, that's not safe for anybody, so.
And I would hope that there's a little bit of discretion in this. Obviously, we're not going to set up speed traps. When something is blatantly disregarding the law in front of you.
Exactly.
I think you got to take some action.
Especially in a residential area, you know. They just didn't care.
If we're concerned about safety, then we have to be proactive.
What actually is the restriction from the state?
We are not supposed to be doing routine traffic stops and running radar.
So by routine traffic stop...
Hang in a second, Heather.
Routine traffic stop means what?
Force speeding or whatever. It's... I don't know exactly what all the parameters are, but we're back at a level three enforcement, which means, you know, unless we absolutely have to, we don't stop people. We don't do... We're not going to people's houses to do VIN verification and things like that. You know, minor unnecessary stuff, we're supposed to stay completely away from.
And the reason for that is for COVID?
Yes.
Safety?
Contact.
Heather, did you have something you wanted to speak to?
And I think Lee followed up on what I wanted to know, but I think if you're going 50 in a 25, that's a real safety issue. That's not a routine stop in my definition. But again, you know, I think that we should stop people that are going double the speed limit or put on the lights and... You know, do something if we see that. That's all. It puts us in mind.
No, we all agree with you. There has to be some discretion in this. It can't be just a total disregard of the motor vehicle laws because of COVID. There has to be a balance between safety and enforcing things, and if people get a little too flavoring about it, it's time to come down on them.
Well, and I think our police officers are using discretion. I'm not saying that they're not stopping anybody. But all the speed enforcement that we have put into place now is going to be put on hold again.
And I can tell you the warning flashes of the lights and stuff. A lot of people are ignoring that even unless you go after them. They will just keep right on going.
That's a tough one.
I did... With... As far as being able to gain traffic studies and do that research, unless we place an officer in act... To actually do the studies for this many days, right at the moment, we don't have a way to gather that information. So, as I had stated earlier or another time, that's going to have to be on hold until the spring. Rick did get a cost of another cart, that portable thing, and it was $9,600.
That was a quote or did he purchase?
No, $9,600. No, this is not a budgeted item. I didn't give him authority to purchase it. The purchase for $9,653.
Wow. They've gone up quite a bit. So I think the last one was about half that price, if I remember right. Anything else on old business? It's too bad about that, the traffic part of it. It's hard to keep public safety in mind when you've got your hands tied behind your back. And the issue is getting more flagrant and more obvious as it goes on. So hopefully, when this thing calms down, we can get back to normal, which hopefully is going to be soon. I'd still like to remind everyone out there that we're not out of this by a long shot with all the numbers going up all over the state, and I hope that everyone takes this seriously regarding the social distancing, regarding the masks, regarding everything that goes with this. We've been kind of lucky up to this point, but our numbers are starting to jump up a little, and I think a lot of it might be from complacency and people thinking, well, we're never... It hasn't happened yet, and they think probably it might not happen, but it's creeping up on us. And I would... And it's... I don't like... I would not like to see it get out of hand for the safety of the people in this state. And there's not... And it's not that much we're being asked to do to try to curb the rise in the COVID cases. So hopefully, people will abide by all the guidelines that are out there.
Unfortunately, it's not just up to us in the state.
No, no.
It's for all the... You know, you've seen all the out-of-state plates on weekends. They're just, you know, 90% of the traffic is out of state.
It is. And hopefully, these people realize that, you know, we're doing better for a reason, and hopefully, they'll follow some guidelines also.
So I've been watching the data on RT.live, which is a transmission rate, and Vermont last week was first in the nation for transmission, and now we're down almost to the one. We're at 1.02. Anything above one is slight... You know, there's an increase in transmission rate. If it's below one, there's a decrease in transmission rate. So our numbers have dropped precipitously relative to transmission rate over the past week and a half.
Which is good news.
Because right now, we're at 1.02. When I looked at it last week, we were at 1.34. So we're moving in the right direction.
That's good. That's really good. I think people, when those numbers do start ticking up, they take it a little more serious. They start realizing that we're, you know, it could happen here for sure. I mean, we're rural. We have a lot of things going for us, but it's just a matter of time. And with the holidays, it makes it even harder to have a safe holiday with the family if you can at all. And now we have Christmas coming up, and we'll see what happens a couple of weeks after Thanksgiving. Any other old business from anyone? Next item on our agenda is to appoint an assistant fire warden. Jeff, can you fill us in on this a little bit?
Yes, well, most towns have a fire warden and an assistant, and I've been doing it... I don't know how long I've been doing it even, but by myself. And eventually, I want to step out of it, but I've realized that it took me some time to build up a rapport with most people that burn regularly and stuff. So I think having a second person, especially if I'm out of town or whatever, have somebody else start getting used to it. And then when I'm done, you know, they can step right up and take over, and hopefully, it'll be a smooth transition. I know the number of illegal burns and stuff compared to when I started is basically nil. I think I only had one illegal burn this year. And we had one brush fire, which was from a campfire that burned into the ground and then showed up five days later. So that's... We've been doing pretty good, so. And you got to get somebody in there to start to build a rapport with people.
Is there any training involved with this, Jeff, or is it...
Well, the person we're looking at works for the... You know, he's a trainer at the State Fire School, and he lives here, so.
And he's on our fire department, is that right?
Yeah.
That kind of helps.
Yes. He's definitely very well qualified.
Excellent. And this appointment, would it be for a time I'm limited? Is it a year term? How does it work? Every year or every three years?
Well, the fire warden is appointed every five. And I think we just appointed Jeff this year. So the assistant fire warden, you could do for a five-year term if you want, or you could do for a term less. Up to you. There's no reason to not do it with the five-year, I would say, with Jeff, and then they're consistent and...
Would it make sense to stagger the appointment?
Yeah, you could do that, Jeff. Up to you.
What's your thought, Jeff?
I don't think it makes a difference, but, you know, it probably wouldn't hurt to have, you know... I'm sure he's going to continue anyway, but I want to get him his name and number out there in the annual report and stuff to get people used to calling him as well as me, so.
So fire wardens, five years, maybe we could do the assistant three years and start with there.
Yep.
Well, if we appoint him now, I'm assuming he'd start in January, so that would be a year offset. I think that's sufficient. Well, whatever the pleasure of the board is on this one, as far as the term.
So we need a motion?
Yeah, we would entertain a motion to appoint Ben Whalen as the assistant fire warden for Chester for a term. So I will make a motion to appoint Ben Whalen as assistant fire warden for a five-year term, starting January 1st, 2021. So Lee Gustafson is the motion. Is there a second on that?
Well, I understood it would have to be three years.
Well, it's totally up to the person making the motion. It's just a...
Well, I'm second.
Heather's the second. Lee is the motion. Any further discussion on this?
Yeah, I have a... Is there an impact to the budget? Is this a paid position? How does... How's this person paid?
Julie, do you know?
Well, the assistant fire warden is not a required position. This is just an... So I would say, if you're going to pay him, you could pay him the amount that Jeff gets made, which is $100 bucks.
I get $20 a year, but I get it from the state, so it's not even through the town.
That's true. It's not even through us.
Yeah, that's all I make for doing it.
Oh, I was thinking it was $100.
So you're not in it for the money, are you?
Well, if I am, I'm not very smart.
And you're right, Jeff. That is paid through the state. So no, Heather, I don't believe that there's any payment for the assistant position.
No. We'll check it out, but it seems like it's negligible, if anything. Any further discussion? All those in favor of appointing Ben Whalen as the assistant fire warden for a five-year term, beginning January 1st, 2021? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Well, I'd like to thank Ben Whalen for taking this on, and Jeff will give you a little chance to kick back in a year or two. Start easing out of things.
Yeah, because I've... I feel that I did a rough guesstimate on my permits this year, and it's somewhere around 250 this year, so. And that's just... That's the ones that I've allowed to burn, and there's been a few for one reason or another I haven't, but...
Well, thanks for all your service and the time that you've been doing it, for sure. Appreciate it. All right, the next item on our agenda, we're going to be going through our general fund budget for 2021. And the first item on our list, this meeting is our Highway Department, and we have our road foreman, Kirby Putnan, here to help us out with the budget.
So you got to go talk into that mic.
Got to switch over, Kirby. So Kirby, can you just give us
Looking at me.
An overview of the budget as you see it and what's going on in it?
Everything's pretty much remotely the same as last year. There's a few things that have decreased. Do you want me to just go right down through the line items that pertain to me, more or less?
Yep. If there's anything that, you know, sticks out in your mind as you go through it. I mean, like you said, it hasn't changed much from last year, it looks like.
Salt is down some. The price of salt has dropped $5 from last year per ton. So we were able to drop that some. Calcium chloride is up a little bit. I'd like to hopefully keep it up slightly. We had quite the summer of dust. And it helps a lot with stabilization on hills. It's not just dust control is what it is really for. You know, so if we can grade a road and then apply that to the road with good moisture in it, and then our roller, which we purchased a few years back now, really helps out on hills. It really packs it in and it'll actually help held it. It'll hold for a lot longer.
Because of the calcium chloride?
Yep. Yeah, because it retains moisture.
Yeah.
But you have to have that moisture to begin with. So it'll just retain it for a lot longer time, period.
Yeah, I've seen it when they put it on the road. It's just the road all of a sudden looks wet.
Yeah.
It's getting the moisture from somewhere.
Right, right. It actually pulls it out. It actually pulls it out of the air when it's applied at the right, but then again, you gotta apply it at the right time.
It's not the greatest on vehicles, though.
No.
Because that's tough. I mean, the salt is.
No, but once it, once it gets rolled in, though, it's not.
It's not bad.
It's not really flying up on the vehicles per se, so. Bridge materials is slightly up. Out in Popple Dungeon, just past Nudus Camp, I believe it's bridge number 62, we're gonna have to do some repairs underneath that by, I actually got permission through, um, yeah, river management and they said I could actually put concrete. So there's a footing underneath that actually is still exposed, that doesn't have the abutment.
Mm-hmm.
And they're gonna let me concrete that up, so there's a new bench for the beams, um, which I'm hoping, I'm actually thinking it's gonna last us quite a lot longer.
And which bridge is that, Kirby?
It's out on Popple Dungeon.
Okay.
Um, quite a ways out, it's just past Nudus Camp Road.
All right.
Um, it's 81 years old and it's lasted this long so far without doing, we've done minimal repairs to it so far.
That's a pretty good testament.
What's that?
You're gonna make an A wider?
No.
Not too bad.
No, I'm not gonna, no, all I'm doing is, is going underneath because the beams are starting to, the beams were concreted in to the abutments also, so it's holding a little bit of moisture right at the end of the beams. So what's happening is it's just rusting at the end of the beams, but the rest of the beam itself, for the span across there, is holding up very well considering, so all I'm doing is making a new bench on a good piece of beam.
Nice.
So, and I think we're getting at a reasonable price for, for what it would take to rebuild that bridge from the start.
Especially with cement deck.
Yeah.
That could be a lot much.
Yeah, and we just, I don't know, it was probably five years ago, we just did the, the curbing on it. Gurney's did the curbing on that, so that, that bridge should be set for a while. Gravel prices are up slightly, so that, I was hoping that number would, would have been able to come down, but that's, I mean, we're not actually getting the quantities that we normally get at that price anymore. We did pretty good this last year and I still have a halfway decent stockpile, so I think we'll be pretty set on gravel for.
You never know with mud season.
Yeah, it, it all depends on, you know.
I mean, it seems like that's a lot of it when it, when it comes down to it and when we have a bad mud season, the gravel disappears into the mud pretty quick.
Yeah, we've been putting stone in for quite a while now.
So they're building up?
Yeah, and it's, there's still certain areas that we don't know where the stone goes. It just keeps disappearing.
Well, Vermont grows stones.
Yeah, so.
They'll show up somewhere. I tell you, for the 90 miles of roads or something that Chester has, you guys do a great job.
Well, well, we have 109.
Well, dirt roads.
Yeah, 98.
Is it something like that?
98 dirt roads.
It's 98.
It's up there.
It's 98 miles.
And all the bridges.
Yeah.
I mean, more bridges than most towns have and stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, so just taking care of our infrastructure is a huge job. That, there's, is that a new line item where it says mowing and it says bolts, blades and small maintenance? Is that the roadside mower?
Yes. Yeah, 'cause we had that, initially it was in blades and chains.
Yeah.
Um, personally, I didn't think it neat, should be in there because we were adding something new to what that line item actually consisted of.
More specific.
To begin with.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I, I mean, I guess we could have added the $4,000 to the chains and blades, but I kind of wanted it separated so I could see what it would actually cost to get that. And I had $5,000 in it last year and I didn't quite spend that, so I dropped it another thousand bucks and I think that'll, you know.
It gives you a little more detailed information that way, so instead of one big lump, so you see where it's going.
Right, so that's literally just for that machine.
Yeah.
That's literally just for that machine.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's out the end of May till, you know, it starts, actually stuff stops growing. I mean, that thing's out every day.
That's really worked out well for the town, doing it ourselves.
Yeah, I, I mean.
As opposed to contracting it.
Yeah, I put, I put Bruce Douglas in that.
Yeah.
And he, he loves it. He goes right out every single day. Hands right out first thing in the morning and, I mean, it's, it's out every single day.
On the paving, we had 9,000 in your 2020 budget, but there's nothing in 2021?
No, that's, that's your actual. There was 9,000 in the actual.
Right, that was, that was what.
But nothing budgeted.
That's the, so what ended up happening is down on Peck Road, the shape of that road was in pretty bad shape and I was trying to keep the monies down by just doing an overlay, but it needed to be shimmed in a few spots, so we went over on tonnage on that road, not a lot, but some. But we had to get it up, you know, back so it was, you had good slopes from the center of the road back out, is what ended up happening there.
So that's what that number reflects, that old number?
Yes, yeah. But the paving, um, there, Kirby and I are looking at paving projects for 2021 and how we're going to propose that, whether it's through capital, whether we reinstitute the bonds just for paving. I, we haven't really, I haven't really looked at all that piece yet. I'm starting the review of all the capital plan stuff now to kind of see where that stands. So there will definitely be paving proposed, um, and we can review it more when we get, when we start reviewing the capital plans, but you know, I would like to see us do, um, I think it was 250 or 270, we'd do Popple Dungeon and Lover's Lane.
That would be all included.
And that, and then what was the third road?
That's all included.
There was Popple Dungeon, Lover's Lane.
Right, Popple Dungeon from where we left off. So when we moved the road over in Popple Dungeon.
Yeah, the new part.
Away from the road, the new part, we paved a section just about out to Stage Road.
Yeah.
Um, so from there out, though, is, is getting pretty rough. And what I'd like to do there is I'd like to reclaim that whole section. So that would involve like bowmaging, where they would just chew up the old material, but it would lay it back down.
Yeah.
And then we would go over it from there.
Yeah.
You're not going any further, you're just reclaiming what's there.
No, no, it's, yeah, it's the same, the same distance.
Yeah.
But it's about a mile.
Yeah.
It's about a mile left.
So it'd be doing that and then doing Lover's Lane?
Lover's Lane, yeah.
It's the other one that's bad.
And.
There was a third.
I had Cavendish Gulf Road in there. Well, it's Cavendish Road.
Okay, that was the third.
Cavendish, which, yeah. Still a little up in the air on whether it really needs to be paved or not.
It's too, it's too far out of town.
Well, actually, that's what makes the cost go up.
Yeah.
Is that their mobilization fee, you know, you're all the way in town here.
Yeah, you could do them closer.
And from Popple Dungeon to Lover's Lane's not terrible, but then when you just say, oh, you need to pick up and go out there for, and it's not, it's 600 feet worth of, it's not like it's a mile stretch too where your tonnage will be up, because the more tonnage you use, the less the price is gonna be. You're buying in more bulk.
So we'll be back to you with the, with the paving plan when we, when you guys look at the capital plan, which actually I think is the next meeting.
270 would sound right.
270 did everything.
That would be everything.
Yeah.
So is that gonna be a one, one-year payment?
Well, that's what we've, that's what I've got to look at and, and part of that is gonna depend on where we end this year, where we end with the surplus. So the initial plan that the board had talked about three or four years ago was the bonds were implemented for paving. They were just, every year, we were gonna do 250,000 a year in paving and each year that would be paid for over five years. And you would just recycle them every, and that's all bonds were ever gonna be used for. And then that got off track and we started doing other things. The concept of doing bonds just for paving makes perfect sense. If you do a five-year payment, the life of that paving is longer than, longer than the five years. Now, it's gonna be a decision for the board to decide how you, I mean, to add 250,000 a year to your budget.
No.
You're not, that's gonna be very difficult to do. So that, that's gonna be a whole, that's why I'm putting it together with the whole capital plan, because if we do have a surplus this year, it's gonna be a conversation you guys are gonna need to have about, you know, Kirby's, one of the, the, one of the only additions to the capital plan this year will be the dump truck. This is, this is a year we need to replace the truck. We've done estimates on repairing to try to extend it. This is not the year to extend a truck. Next year will likely be the year to extend the truck, 22. So we do have a truck, we're gonna be putting in there about 130. So this is where you need to have the conversation. If you have a surplus, do you wanna just pay the truck one year and not add to the capital plan? Do you wanna pay off old debt? Do you, that's just your own personal philosophy of how you wanna deal with that, but we won't be able to tackle that till we know the real numbers. But at your next meeting, you'll have the capital plan as it sits, um, the debt schedules as it sits, um, and then the things that we are looking to do for next year, paving, the truck, and we need to match, we have 200,000 we need to match.
Sidewalk.
For the sidewalk project, because that never got, never got included each year. So, um, you know.
We're gonna have to have some.
There'll be a discussion you guys are gonna need to have about what, what direction you wanna go.
I think we have to be careful about putting bonds out too far for paving.
Absolutely.
Because.
You don't wanna go more than five years.
There's different types of paving. Now, I'm glad to hear that he's gonna reclaim the, the mill, the pavement, because what it does is it gives you a better base. And it takes all the cracks out of the pavement, because you can put a shim coat or something on, on top of paving and that crack that's underneath will show back up.
It'll come back up.
So it's not gonna last as long.
Nope.
So if we're gonna do the paving correctly, I don't, I can.
But in order, yep, but in order to have the money to do that every year, you've gotta get into a system of where you set X dollars aside every year.
Yep.
You know? And the bond plan is a good plan for that, as long, like, as long as you, that's why they initially were. You were, every year was a bond for X dollars financed over five years, you know? So each year out of the bond plan, 250,000 was being spent. So, but it may take us a bit to get back into that. Um, so, yeah.
We'll have to watch the numbers closely at the end of this year.
Exactly.
And then what our budget is for next year and how we could attack this or how we could deal with it.
Yep, because it really is just your own philosophy of, do you pay off old debt or do you just not add new debt to the old debt? You know?
Well, we, we will have this discussion, but I, I, I firm believer the less debt, the better, because it is.
Absolutely. And our auditor has no issues with the level of debt that we have.
No.
At all.
Well, look.
So.
Go ahead, Heather.
Okay, thanks. The other part of that philosophy is that you don't bond something that five years out, people still aren't using. So pavement, that's what makes sense, because the longevity of the road is gonna be, my understanding, is much greater than the five years. So it's almost like the taxpayer in four and five years is paying for what they're using then, in a way.
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions or concerns on the, the highway budget with, now that we have Kirby here with us? How has COVID been this year? It hasn't really affected the highway department, has it?
No, not really, no.
I mean, you're still doing everything that you've always been doing and you're, you know, you're following the guidelines and doing what you can.
Yeah, I mean, they're, you know, especially, I would say in March was, you know, when it first, first kicked on was the toughest.
Yeah.
And we, we downsized to five guys, that kind of limited us to what we could actually do. And then even after that, I just was trying my best to not have five guys, but some jobs kind of require men to be near each other.
Yeah.
You gotta be helping each other, which, you know, it slowed us up a little bit in the beginning, but once we kind of got through that and got into summer, I mean, we were able to tackle on a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, we rebuilt that bridge out in Smokesheer in four days.
Wow.
And that was a whole superstructure, new beams and new everything.
Not to mention all the hauling of gravel for the new building.
Right, and then we did that and we did a, yeah.
9,000 yards we had.
Five-day haul of almost, wow, we did 9,100 yards. I still have other numbers that I'm gonna give you.
Yeah.
Probably up to about 10,000 yards that we hauled down there so far.
I was watching that in the mornings, I'd see your trucks lined up before the crew was even there from Russell and you guys were itching to go and the trucks were all lined up and then, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was a bit of an issue.
We're not gonna keep you behind anymore.
There was a small, yeah.
There was a small hiccup there.
Just in the beginning.
There was a small hiccup.
One day, then the hiccup was gone and it was, here's your gravel, pal.
Yeah.
That's right. You want us hauling, you better be here.
There was a small hiccup there where they wanted trucks right away and.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, the emergency services building is coming along, which means the town garage is gonna be next and I guess that's an agenda item later.
Yep.
Because we're gonna be talking about the mechanics bay possibly or the, at least the engineering for it and stuff, so we'll see how that all works out. Any, any other questions for Kirby? Or anything on the highway budget at all from anybody? All right, hearing none. Kirby, thanks, you and your crew. Do a great job for the town.
Thank you.
Much appreciated and hoping you have, I was gonna say a mild winter, but that doesn't work because there were a lot of people.
Snowing when I came in here, I went up 30, 35 in Handover Road before I came here and they were, they were holding up good, but we'll see when I leave.
Sign of things to come.
Yeah.
Thanks for being here tonight, Kirby. Appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
Uh, the next item is the budget from the library and we have some folks from the library have here, Ed Grossman, I think Deirdre Doran is on, in our virtual world, and Robert Need. And Julie, can you help us out? It looks like there's a small request for an increase in the library budget, but part of that was worked out with you and the library regarding health benefits, I believe, or something along those lines.
Yep, so if you recall, um, we had talked about this a while ago, back this summer, about the library having a desire to bring the, those two positions up to 2020 standards. Both of those positions are, are pretty significantly underpaid when compared to the standards and did not currently have benefits. So the question came up, the question that has come up for many years, are they or are they not municipal employees? So we sent that out to Jim and I gave you guys a copy of his email and his research and really the question is more, um, uh, one of the library employees are managed by the library trustees. This select board does not have control or authority over them and we give to the library every year an allocation, a lump sum of money for them to spend how they choose, that's
That's what the voters give. Notoriously, they use those funds to pay for salaries. Um, and so, uh, Ed did a bunch of research and I've done some research and, um, figured out that, um, I, he had asked about how much of an increase would be appropriate, you know, kind of phasing this in, um, trying to get the librarians up to what is fair wage, uh, for them. So, uh, we talked about three to 4%. It so happens that it came in at 4%, uh, which I think is a very fair number. Um, it would be doing what we have done, what we did in mid-year, which was put them out to the health exchange where they can take advantage of any form of subsidy that is out there. Um, and this pays them a stipend, which helps them to match, um, their portion of the health benefit. And beyond that, I'm going to give it to Ed and Robert.
So Ed, Ed, would you like to speak to the, uh, the library budget? And I guess, uh, Robert, you're also out there?
We're not hearing him.
Yeah, here we are. Thanks. Hi, everybody. I just wanted to say thanks for the opportunity to not only present the budget, but also kind of explain the thought process that went on behind it. Um, and Ed, Ed will kind of lay out the budget in, in detail for you. Um, but I also wanted to express my appreciation to Julie for kind of opening up this active two-way channel of communication, which has been really extraordinarily helpful for us. Um, so she helps answer our questions. She helps clarify what constraints we operate under. Um, and that's been really, really helpful. Um, and also I just wanted to mention that the library's staff, the director, the youth service librarian and the assistant have done an amazing job keeping the library viable through the pandemic. And not only just getting through it, but also actually expanding the programs that the library has offered and shifted a lot of things to online and outdoors. Um, and I think that's something that the community really, really appreciates. Um, I, I also want to thank the select board for your continued support of the Whiting Library. Without that support, the library couldn't, would not be viable. So thank you for that. Um, the last thing I wanted to say before Ed describes the budget is that the library, being a municipal library, yet having this independent board of trustees that's charged with managing it, um, you know, always presents the opportunity for a disconnect. Um, but that is definitely not happening in Chester. And that's because of the select board's willingness to support the library and Julie's willingness to communicate with us. And also, um, because this board of trustees takes the responsibility very seriously, takes their financial responsibility very seriously. Uh, and we understand that we need to be fiscally conservative, um, yet still provide the services we need to provide to the community. Um, so, uh, when we think about expanding those services or making changes in the library, part of our thought process is how can we do that with, uh, while avoiding adding a burden to the town, the community and taxpayer? So just to put in context, how we go about thinking about what the library needs to look like in the future and how we're going to pay for it. So I'll leave it to Ed to kind of lay out the budget.
I do, uh, second Robert's words, uh, about appreciating how much should we appreciate the select board and, and Julie working with us. Um, we do value the public library and, and want to, um, continue it as a, a fine resource for the town of Chester. So with that said, in the budget, you know, very, um, simply that, um, in 2020, um, I have to say, Deirdre and Carrie, um, did a phenomenal job of providing services and modifying services and continue to do so during the pandemic. And as far as finances, I mean, Deirdre's been very conservative in expending funds to balance shortfalls in areas affected by the pandemic. Unfortunately, and I say this with a bit of humor, that fines are down, um, as are copier fees, um, non-resident fees are down and in-house programs. But fortunately, the director was able to hold, um, a safe as possible book sale and raise some revenue. Donations have been generous in spite of the difficult times. And we hope that our November fundraising drive, um, will be successful. So, um, we have a positive attitude and due to, uh, excuse me, Deirdre's efforts and the staff's efforts, um, our budget is, is running in the black in spite of the pandemic. Just to, um, kind of piggyback on, excuse me, excuse me, what Julie was talking about. For the last seven months, the select board has been, um, great in having this interim program where $1,500, um, was matched by $1,500 from the library to defray some of the cost of health insurance for our librarians. Uh, so that's, puts a perspective on 2020. The spreadsheet that I gave to Julie and that you have, um, it's accurate. There's one change that the town of Andover, um, is in the budget for $2,600. This year, they, um, contributed $2,500 last year. So that'll be a 4% increase for 2021. And the difference there is $100. So, uh, moving on to the 2021 budget, it's very similar to the 2020 budget. The revenues are the same, the expenses are the same, except payroll is down a bit because we have a new director. And, um, one expense that is up is the differential for defraying some of the cost of health insurance. We want to continue the measure that was taken by the select board, excuse me, and, uh, for the last seven months of 2020. And basically, you know, the feedback that Julie got from Jim Carroll, the feedback I got from the council to the secretary of state is, it's not a question of whether our librarians are municipal employees, which they are. The question is, are they entitled to the same health benefits or the same benefits as the town of Chester employees? And the answer there is, is, well, it's open to debate, but what we understand from the attorneys is that the Whiting Library Board of Trustees is fully empowered to develop our own personnel policy. So with that in mind, we want to do the right thing for our municipal employees. We want to provide health insurance. And if we were to take that measure and try, you know, just to go straightforward for health insurance, for about a silver plan, a middle of the road plan, it would cost anywhere from $16,000 to $36,000, um, for the two, um, two professional librarians. We think that as a, a solid measure for 2021, that if we pay the cost of the differential for the librarians to be able to access a silver plan on the Vermont Health Administration or an MVP plan, it would cost about $260. And we proposed the same thing we proposed, um, in 2020 as a differential measure to pay that differential. When it comes to, it's 3120 a year per year, which is 6240 for the hope. And we're asking for a 4% increase, which just by math turns out to be 3120, exactly half of what we're asking for. The other 3120, um, we would take out of savings, um, to match it. So what we propose is to do that for 2021. And we look to, look at a multi-year plan to phase in, um, benefits for our two professional employees. But for 2021, we think that, um, accomplishes our goal. So, uh, that's the gist of the increase. And, uh, the other items stay constant. And again, um, just to give you an idea of where we are, and I think Julie mentioned that our librarians, you know, we're working to pay them fairly, that in the 2009 Vermont Library Association Guide for Salary and Benefits, it recommends a first year starting salary of 42,350 with full benefits, including health benefits, for a director with a master's of library science. And I know Deirdre's here, she has a master's of library science. Um, and we certainly want to, um, respect her professionalism, Carrie's professionalism, and, you know, maintain a high-quality library. So with that said, we appreciate your support. Um, I'll be happy to answer the questions.
Thanks, Ed. Thanks for, uh, the explanation on there. I'm, I'm glad that, uh, the library and the town are able to work together amicably to overcome all these issues that we've had. Uh, not, not issues, not just the, the health thing, the, the, the health, uh, discussion to where we could work towards having healthcare for all the employees. And I, I just want to throw this in there, like I always do whenever we do talk about healthcare. I wish this country would get it together, that it wouldn't be an issue when we talk about our employees, when we talk about people, that healthcare would be a right for everyone in this country. But it seems like we might be a while before we get there. That, that being said, it seems like you've worked really hard to get this budget to where it is. I mean, there's no increases at all, it seems. In fact, the, the payroll actually has gone down a little bit. And the only increase is going to help to get those health benefits to the employees there, which I think is important to maintain, uh, retain people that are qualified, highly qualified for the jobs they do and the great jobs that they do there. I think the library is like a hugely important part for the town regarding just the community spirit that it, that it has, uh, through the town with the people that are all connected to it, all the people that work there, the board and everyone else that's connected with it. It's a huge asset to the town and I think when people think about coming here or moving here, it's a big, uh, a draw. It's a beautiful building with, with a, with a great program and great people there. And I think it's a huge economic development driver also. When people, you know, consider moving to an area and stuff, they look at things like this. One thing that I did see, I forget where I saw it, that it said in Vermont, we have more libraries per capita than any other state in the union. And I was kind of proud about that, that, that that's the way it works. And we, we take a lot of pride in, in our local libraries and the, and the people that work them and what they do for our communities. And I think it's really important and I'm, I'm really excited about what you guys do and I'm thrilled to support everything that you do there. So at this point, if there's any questions or concerns about the budget or quest, uh, questions, uh, the folks are here to answer them, so.
I have no questions.
Anybody have any, uh, questions or ideas or anything they'd like to speak to on this budget?
Well, I'd like to just do what you have to say already. They really are an asset to the community. I do have a question, um, and it's, it's, um, I think I, it was answered before when we, um, decided to share this expense earlier in the year. Um, if for some reason, this, this is a subsidy that goes to the employee, but if the employee is going to get healthcare elsewhere, do they still get this? Or would you then put that towards salary or how would that work?
Can I?
Go ahead, Ed.
Um, it's, it's going to be a stipend. So it would go to the employee, but it wouldn't be, uh, considered salary. It's a stipend, so if they choose to get health, what, health and another healthcare from another provider, um, we're just using it as a benchmark for a reasonable plan. So if they choose to access that plan, um, that's fine. If they choose to get health benefits another way, that's fine. We just thought that would be a reasonable amount to provide what we call a silver plan, which is a middle, middle of the road plan.
So if, if this is very common, they're getting their insurance some other place, then it's more of a stipend for their, to increase the salary or the package. Is that correct?
It's more to increase the package, as you say, not the salary. Um, it's, it's a stipend which is not considered part of salary, so, uh, um, it's not taxed the same way. Um, um, yes, if somebody had a, a family and they needed to get benefits, this would defray some of the cost of the plan they would get.
That work?
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have none. I'm, I'm glad we were able to, uh, work out these questions that we had regarding the, how the library runs and stuff. Because when I was reading through some of the information, it, uh, there were some of the options that were in there seemed like you can, it can get pretty confrontational if we disagreed on budgets and items like that. I'm glad we're able to reach consensus and agree on how, well, how we're going forward. I think it's going to help in the long run on both ends. And, uh, it's, it's a, a good way to do it compared to some of the other, uh, ways that are out there on how things would run. And I, I would like to just thank you again for all the work you guys do on the library end of it. And, uh, you're well appreciated by the town. Thank you very much for it, guys. And ladies. All right. Anything else on the town library? I'll set with that, guys. Mm-hmm. The next item on our agenda is a proposal to design an additional bay at the town garage in the, uh, process where, of the, of the remodeling that we're going through. So Julie, can you take us through this?
So, um, Kevin Reisak has begun the, uh, finalizing the design, uh, for the renovations to the town garage. And while he was early in this phase, Kirby and I met with him, um, to talk about the options of if Chester wanted to bring in, um, an in-house mechanic, I had talked to you guys about that a while ago, um, and just costing out what that looks like. Um, one of the things that we determined, uh, quickly in the conversation is that our current town garage, the height, it just simply isn't tall enough. Um, even if we did a pit, it just isn't tall enough. Um, so if that was something we were ever going to do in the future, um, it would be cheaper to add on a bay, um, instead of raising the roof on the whole town garage that we have now. And, um, Kirby really doesn't have a bay to give away for a mechanic. Um, and we're not ready for that. I, you know, there's still a lot of research to do. There's a lot to figure out if that's smart, if it's not. Um, so we're, we're just not ready to go in that direction. Um, but in that conversation, Kevin commented that if we think that is something we may do down the road, now is the time to go ahead and have it designed while they're already doing the design work. Um, this class for the design and structural engineer portion is right around 11. Um, it could easily be double that, um, if we do it separately. And what they will do is make sure that when they are doing the design and the work now, that the electrical is what it needs to be. Um, if we put a, put something in future, that the water sewer is what it needs to be, that, you know, get ourselves ready, um, now for that down the road. So this is, this is totally something that is an option that I wanted to present. Um, that, that extra bay may never get built or it may be in five years or maybe it's in three years. I don't know. It'll be a while. We don't have the money right now. But, um, this at least would get it designed and ready to go when the time comes, if the time comes, that this is something we wanted to do.
So Julie, I have a couple of questions. One is, um, have you done a cost benefit analysis on this particular potential addition?
I have not done that yet.
Okay. So, um, the question we have before us then is do we spend the 11.5 now in the hopes that at some point we will do this and save more money down the road?
Correct.
So when do we need to make the decision about this?
Pretty, pretty soon. Um, Kevin's getting to the point in the, in the re, you know, the redesign of the town garage, he's getting to that point of where he's going to start looking at electrical and the things that he would need to consider, um, when planning this addition.
So is there an option as opposed to completely designing this building and just taking into account the utilities like the electrical or something to have those in place without the design and all the work that goes into it? But still just do some of the basics that would be incorporated into this remodel and, uh, you know, repair of the existing facility with that in mind? It's like, it's like a stopgap measure, I guess.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
I guess, I guess the other question is how much work is it on your part to do that cost benefit analysis? I mean, it, it sounds like a great idea to hire our own mechanic. I have no idea how much money we spend on strictly fixing or repairing equipment that we don't do in-house. And is that going to be a, a significant savings for the town or?
Well, I have sat down, you know, I've sat down, I've talked to all the department heads, you know, the guys have all kind of thought through and, and all of them agree. Boy, it would be really cool to have an in-house mechanic. And every time we talk about it, there's new ways that it would be a benefit. Um, so it's not, you know, it's not just, um, you know, a truck breaks down, it has to go down, you know, to the shop to get work. It's not just that. It's, you'd have somebody who can do all the oil changes. You have somebody that when the ambulance has to have brake work done, it's not out and off-service for a week. It's off-service for a day. Um, it's those types of benefits. If, if we can, Kirby and I have talked about it, you'll make your money back if you can simply having an in-house mechanic can make it so that you don't trade trucks every five years, you trade them every seven. You say, you know what I mean? So there, I have not put it on paper.
Right.
Um, all of our guts say.
Sure, no, I.
Yeah, there's definitely a savings. But what I don't know, Lee, is the, the upfront cost of outfitting that bay. Um, you're going to have to have a lift that can handle. All the computer stuff, the tools, adding that seller, and I, I'm not 100% sure how to go about doing it.
Well, and just that first blush, it looks like a really good idea. There are significant costs that go into that, but the savings, and I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
At some point, I'd like to see those numbers.
Oh, yeah.
I don't want, I don't want to push you into a corner right now and say, you know, I'm not going to vote on this until we see that, but I think it'd be a great idea for us to have at least an idea. I mean, this is not an insignificant amount of money that we're being asked to approve for a potential that I think is a great idea, but until I see the numbers.
Yep.
I don't know. I mean, I'm in the same boat. My, I own a bunch of equipment that sits idle most of the time because when I need it, I need it and I can't wait for somebody to bring it down here. So, I totally get that, but on the other hand, I'm not the town of Chester and so I don't want to spend somebody else's money that is not being used.
Yeah, I think for several reasons, like if you're not, we've saved this town a lot of money by being ready for jobs, you know, by having the preliminary work done and then the money comes up somehow or a portion of it will come up from the state so we can get jobs done. So, I'm a firm believer in being ready to a certain extent, but I agree with Arnie, I don't know if we need to have the whole thing designed. Now, I mean, now that you mentioned that, but we do need to have the, like, the conduits run for the electrical and figure out, make sure that stuff can be put right in there and I think we should look at doing this, but, and I can tell you from working here over 30 years, when I started here, I started in a highway and we did a lot of our own mechanical stuff because everything wasn't as computerized or everything, you know, now you can't do nothing without taking it down there and they get, it's got to be put on a computer and you're paying, I don't know what you pay for a mechanic, 125 bucks an hour now?
More than that.
Yeah.
Oh, that's 175 for per hour, but I would say you're guaranteed, you're guaranteed $1,000 even with warranty every time I bring a truck down there.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, again, I'm going to repeat, I think this is a great idea, I just.
Let me talk to, let me talk to Kevin. I have a meeting with him and Todd Davis tomorrow anyways, so let me talk with Kevin and I'll ask him if there is a hybrid, if there is a middle ground to where it.
Because I would think the prep work for the utilities that would be involved in the building that was added on would be pretty much the same no matter what the building was.
Right.
We don't really have to design the building, we just have to have it in mind that there might be a building future, like Jeff was saying, maybe the conduit has to be in line, maybe the service panel in the garage has to be oversized at this point or the heating plant or whatever, just in case there's going to be another bay. Those issues that we have to address, but as far as the design and the looks and all that stuff, that's a big chunk of that, 11,000 when you looked at it, there was engineering in there, there was architect work in there, so maybe it's just the engineering part that we need to know to prep it just in case and it might work out.
I will ask tomorrow.
But it does seem.
Go ahead, Heather. Was that you?
Yeah. The other, we have the bond that we took out for the project and I guess I should come in or get on a call with you, Julie, because I'm not sure if, have an idea of, we wanted to also include some landscaping, now there's this. So, you know, how, how are we, because I agree with everything everyone said, I mean, if, if it makes sense on paper and if it makes sense to have our own mechanic, I'm all for it, but there's a whole lot of upfront costs and then there's the ongoing cost of another employee. So, you know, it sounds great, but I want to see the numbers, but I also just want to get your feeling about where we are with the bond money and are we going to have extra, are we, are we coming in on a savings?
At this point, we are coming in on a savings. Concrete, concrete work is pretty much done, so we got through that without change. So far, I will say, what has happened so far in that job, there has been no change orders. So, we are, we are on track and the gravel produced a savings. So, right now, we're sitting very good, but I don't want you to make the decision on this, planning on that we'll have extra because we've got a long way to go before we'll know if, what we've got left over, you know?
Julie, if there is, if we do have, if we come way under budget, it's my understanding that we could use other monies for the landscaping or maybe this bay, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, that's another thing that I'd like to just think about because we've asked the voters to do this and they said yes and this is all great, but if we can do the project within the amount that we bonded, I'd feel much better.
Absolutely, and I am not, I am not proposing that this bay be constructed anytime in the next several years. I mean, I would say the next five, because you couldn't add this bay, there is not going to be enough, enough savings generated from the project to produce enough to build this additional bay. And I don't think we can hit the taxpayers with another request, at least until we get past 2025, in my mind. We have a hurdle to get over before we can go to the taxpayers with any more substantial money for bonds, in my opinion.
I do, but that's why I ask.
Yeah.
Because we don't even have to go to them for the 11 and how much did we want for landscaping?
Well, if you were going to do that entire plan, it's 50, but you would never do that entire plan. The plan itself was 12,400. That currently has been paid. You were going to potentially, if there was money left over, reimburse the general fund from the bond plan for that money. And, you know, if you wanted to start and do some initial landscaping around the front and maybe that monument park, I think you're looking at probably 10 to 15.
Well, and so maybe could we, if we decide to approve this or look at it, could we do it in the same way that we did the plan for the landscaping that we pay back the general fund?
Oh, that's up to the board. Yep.
There's, there's probably a few different options out there on how we could do something like this, but at this point, it almost sounds like we need some more information that Julie's going to be working on and to see if we could par it down to a smaller amount and just getting some necessities that would have to be put in, that would make more sense to put in as the remodel is going on without having to design this whole building and stuff. So, we're not exactly sure if we're going to be talking about this full 11,000 and change or hopefully there's some lower number that we could discuss and to see if it's feasible to go this route, just to get it prepped for a possible future addition for a mechanic. But like Lee was saying, before that happens, there would have to be some good documentation and some research to justify something like this.
Oh, absolutely.
Before we went that route. So, we're just kind of trying to prep for it, just in case.
I'd just like to say, I think the towns got their money's worth from, as far as the town garage goes. I mean, that was a steel structure building, built in 1970, I think, somewhere in there and now we're just getting around to rehab it and if we're planning on future for a bay, you know, once this gets brought up to code now, and, you know, I think we're looking at another 40, 50 years out of it and I think we're getting a pretty good bang for our buck for, for that, but I think being ready, you know, if we can, especially if we can bring it down, like you say, and not design the whole bay, but plan for the utilities, that, you know, that could save us a little bunch more money in the, in the future.
So, I will go back and ask Kevin, what would the cost be to do, what is necessary now, just what's absolutely necessary at this point?
What makes sense, sure.
Correct.
Yeah, the other comment I'd like to make is that if we're not even thinking about implementing this plan for at least five years, who knows what's going to happen in five years? The needs of the town could change, technology could be different and so we have a plan that sits there, we paid for and then five years comes and it's like, can't use it, it's out of date, we're going to do it anyway.
And I did.
And I'm not saying that that's going to happen, but it could.
Right, well, and I did ask Kevin about that because I had, when we talked about this, I had said, you know, this is not a building that's going to be built anytime in the next five years that I can see unless we got some major windfall or something. And he, he had said that, that's why he was talking about, well, it's just an architect design, you can bring it back out and use it whenever you want. Anyway, I'll go back to him tomorrow. I have a meeting with him tomorrow.
You don't need the architect to prepare.
Yep.
I think it's more.
We need the engineering for the mechanical stuff.
I will be talking to him tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Because it might be something that makes sense to do, so.
Sure, absolutely.
And if, I guess this is the time to bring it up, but as far as the new public safety building, they started laying water pipe yesterday and I was down there checking on it and checking on what they were doing, I was talking to the guy running the, the clerk of the works there, he, they're not going to get the cement floors poured before it gets too cold so that they can't do it, so they've got to put the building up first and then pour the flooring afterwards. So, that might stretch out the, you know, cost a little bit. If they could have got the floors in, it would have saved money before they put the building.
Yeah, but they, they knew early on that they were not going to get to that point.
Yeah, because of the delays and stuff, yeah, but, so, you know, there's still issues, there's still concrete to go down this.
Right. The weather we've been having, it's like.
Yeah.
They're taking as much advantage of that as they can.
But I am impressed, you know, I was worried about how they were going to lay the pipe and they, they did a very good job. And I was concerned that they were going to try to bed it in stone and in my experience, that does not bode well. 20 or 30 years later, you're going to have leaks and stuff, but they, they bed it in sand and they compacted it very well and their thrust blocks and stuff for up what I think is, should be going in there, so I'm really happy about what they were doing down there.
Nice. There's a, it's amazing how much is below ground in a building like that, what's buried down there, because, and once it's down there, that's it.
Right.
You don't get a second chance on that stuff. When I started, we're looking behind, you can see all the, there's a million pipes sticking up in different places. I hope they're in the right place, because that's, that's, that's quite the job.
What amazes me is how much yellow iron there is on that little tiny piece of property.
Yeah.
It's like a giant chess game, they're moving stuff here and there, it's crazy.
So, Julie, I guess you know what?
Yep, I'll go do some more research, yep.
So, any other questions or concerns about the proposal for the design addition? No?
Thank you, Julie, thank you for your input. Those people who work there and know what they're doing.
Yes, you're welcome.
So, new business and a giant, agenda item, future agenda items. Usually that's at the end, that's why.
Well, because.
I know executives.
Because I've given you the potential of an executive session.
Which I don't think we're, we're going to be needing.
That's a.
I spoke to most of the board members and we'll be fine. So, future agenda items, see if I get that right.
So, I.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Lee.
I was talking to everybody about signs in this town and I did notice on the main street side of Church Street, the "No Through Tucks" sign was there. Are we, did you order another one to put on the other end of Church Street?
End of Church Street.
Oh, I looked at it.
It's down right when you first turn on Church Street.
Right, it should be located for like literally right as you come off 103.
Right as you come off 103, right onto Church Street, it's right there on your right-hand side.
Yeah, it's, it's not far at all.
Yeah, okay.
Put flashing neon around it.
Exactly.
Hopefully they'll still ignore it.
Wrap that sucker in orange tape. So, at your next, one thing that came up today relating to COVID and town meeting.
Wow.
So, on your next agenda, I just, I'm telling you this now because I want you to be thinking about it, at your next agenda or next meeting, I'm going to have an agenda item, you guys have, the state in part of its Act 1, some 60 something, all the COVID stuff, has given the authority to the select board for 2021 only to waive the requirement of people running for office to bring in a petition. And for people who are asking to be on the town warning as far as special interest, they do not need to get a petition. That is totally 100% at the discretion of the select board. It's an option that you have. If you choose to go that route, it will need to be by motion at a, you know, meeting and it's got to be warned on the agenda. So, I'm just telling you that ahead of time because I'm on the fence, I could go both ways, so I wanted you to have time to think about that and kind of process that for yourselves.
But we have to make that decision relatively soon because people are going to start thinking about it.
You need, if, if you're going to do that, if you're going to waive that petition requirement, you need to do it at your next meeting, okay? Then, we have, again, under the same act, select boards have the authority to, at town meeting, those who vote special interest articles and municipal budgets from the floor can make a motion to have all of those voted Australian ballot. And you would simply have, you would simply have a informational meeting which then could be held via Zoom. Again, one year only, I would, I would ask you to think about putting the budget and all those things out for Australian ballot vote, just, there's, there's pros and cons to that as well.
Well, the budget already is, it's just all the.
Budget is not Australian ballot vote, we vote that from the floor at town meeting. So, we do not have to make that decision until January. So, you've got time to think about that, but that's out there. If we are going to do it Australian ballot, by the time, we have to, you have to make that decision by the time we sign the warning, which is close to the end of January. But the petitions we'll have on the agenda item for the next meeting.
That's a lot to take, Heather.
It is a lot, that's why I'm telling you early, just, just kind of be thinking and.
I'm wondering if there's a way like to do virtual signatures for a petition where the person doesn't have to sign in person, but at least you just list the people's names on something, just so.
I'm not smart enough to do it, but they're doing it for everything else, so I don't, I think this should be, still be.
I don't know that petitions can be signed virtually and still be legal and binding. That's why the options are you just do the petitions or you just waive them.
Well, if you're waiving the fact that you're doing the petition at all, so, I mean, if that's legal, I would imagine any hybrid would be.
That I don't know, that, that change in legislation was pretty specific.
All right.
So, but I can certainly check into that if you want.
Well, that's something to think about in two weeks and make a decision on.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Hopefully, well, I'll have the grant budget, the capital budget, and again, I'm hoping to have Ron to get me the draft of the reserve fund policy.
Yeah.
I was hoping to have for the next meeting as well.
Anything else for future agenda items from any board members? All set?
Yep.
We'll go on to our next item, which is zoning administrator. We haven't had a zoning administrator for, I think it's about, about a half a year, Michael?
A couple of months, Kathy's been filling in, she's your inner, yeah.
Kathy's been there doing it.
Yeah.
And we put out some advertising and we had four applicants, I believe.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, Kirby looks like he wants to go home.
You can go.
It's okay.
See ya.
Thank you, Kirby.
See you later. Yes, we had four applicants. The planning commission, Vermont law requires that zoning administrators are appointed upon nomination and recommendation of the planning commission. So, the planning commission held interviews with the four applicants, narrowed it down to two, prioritizing one and two. I met with their priority applicants and had a second interview with her, her name is Jill. And. and had a second interview with her. Her name is Jill. And I put, we, I, I think she would be a great fit for the town. The priorities this time around is enforcement for various things, for zoning violations, for salvage yard ordinances. And Jill comes with quite a bit of legal background and experience. And I think that she would be a good fit to kind of bring us into this new phase for Chester. She is on the Zoom meeting tonight. If anybody had questions, I did give you the option of an executive session if you wanted to interview her as well. Totally your choice. Planning, she's been fully vetted by the planning commission and myself, but you have that option too, up to you. Or you can ask her questions in open session.
I'm grateful that we have four applicants. It seemed like
Absolutely.
Highly qualified applicants involved. And the lady that you, the planning commission has chosen, and, and yourself, Julie, seems extremely well qualified for the job.
Absolutely.
I think we're lucky to have someone that's going to be coming on board with the experience and the knowledge that she has directly related to a lot of the issues and things that we want to address as a, as a zoning administrator. We would like for that to happen. The executive session part, I, I don't think there's any need on my end.
I don't see no need for it. I have no desire for one.
I, I, it seems, the planning commission has done their job and, you know, they, this is the recommendation that they have come forward with. I'm more than happy to follow their recommendation with this appointment and stuff. And I appreciate, or I bet it's Jill Barger.
Jill. Yep.
And she's on, on Zoom with us. She's on Devon's iPod, I believe. So, Jill, thank you for taking an interest in our town and joining us with the, on the zoning commission. I appreciate all the experience that you have. And I especially like the comment that you made in your letter that said you had a keen interest in environmental preservation during community development, recognizing a town must balance vibrancy with environmental stewardship. I think that's a fantastic outlook to have for a town like ours and the size and what goes on in this town. If there's any questions from any board members, Jill is with us virtually. Anybody would like to, questions or make any statements?
So, I'd like to ask a question.
I'd just like to thank you for the letter that you all wrote. Appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
This is Heather, and I'd just like to say that I have asked the board and the, and great decisions. So, thank you. And Jill, I'm sure it'll be great. Thank you so much.
Lee? So, my name's Lee Gustafson. Jill, I just wanted to follow up on the comment that Arnie raised about the environmental stewardship. And just wanted to hear a little bit of your philosophy on how that would play into your role as zoning administrator?
Well, my main concern is the quality of life in a small town like Chester. And I think that it requires people to follow some basic rules and standards that the community has set up. And I believe that you have to make sure that the environment is safe. And sometimes preserving the environment may step on some people's toes in what they want to do in their own personal life. And it's, it's a very fine line that you have to walk. But the idea of beautification of a community and maintaining of the beautification of a community is very important. And some people don't really care about their neighbors and the general view or the general atmosphere of a community. So, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a balance that has to be set. But I think rules have to be followed. And I, I know that you all know what I've done most of my life. For years, I've been in a criminal defense attorney. So, it is sort of involved in trying to get people to understand what the rules are. And if you don't follow them, what consequences you have to pay. But you can't be too hard on people. But, you know, that you have to preserve the community and you have to preserve the environment that they live in.
Well, thank you for your answer. How would that impact the difference between economic development or economic sustainability and environmental sustainability?
Well, I think most of the time, if you, if you work at it, the two could go hand in hand. I think right now, there's a lot of challenges to our environment from the current administration. And I grew up in the 70s and 80s. And, you know, we, we worked hard to set up rules for clean water, clean air. And I'm always chastising my son and his group for, they took it all for granted that those things are there. And they're not, they're not, you can't take them for granted. You have to, you have to enforce environmental quality. You have to enforce clean air and clean water. And I'm reading about sewage problems and, and other problems and air pollution problems. And when you bring in, any of the towns have had this, and to survive on, you know, landscaping and other jobs, you have to have some type of industry. But the industry's going to have to match the, the needs of Chester and this town plans.
Yeah. Thank you again for your answer. I, just one more follow-up comment or question, I guess. In a past life, I was an environmental consultant for almost 25 years and have dealt with state regulatory and EPA regulatory agencies. And have seen, to a degree, a part of the philosophy of some of these governmental agencies is a little bit, in my opinion, over the top. And so, the balance that I would like to see is common sense being weighed against what the regulations state, recognizing that sometimes the regulations can be interpreted in different ways that can either lead to economic vibrancy at an apparent expense of the environment or vice versa. So, I, again, I just want to make sure that your philosophy matches one where we can grow the economy, we can make what we do here in Chester sustainable while protecting the environment. I think that what you've said to me is you see the need for that balance, and I appreciate that.
I think, yeah, Julie, I, I don't think either side can just go willy-nilly and adore the other. You know, we, we can't worry about things like oil spills and things, I suppose, nothing that dramatic. But, you know, see, even a lot of erosion on some of the hillsides. I noticed when you drive down, I don't know a lot about what was been occurring, but it looks like there's been too much clear cutting in some of the sides of our mountains and some of the sides of our hills are just, you know, washing away. And that's, even that small little problem like that is problematic. So, and we have to remember our strain, and we have to watch what's coming from other towns down our way. There's, there's a lot to be concerned about. But again, we, we need, we need, Vermont has a big problem with the loss of, of our population, loss of jobs. And we've got to find some way to revitalize this, this beautiful state. And so, we need all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Any other questions for Jill while, while she is here? Well, it, it seems like, Jill, you're going to bring a wealth of experience and knowledge to this job and appreciate the outlook that you have. And I also would like to just thank the planning commission, Peter, and your crew there for taking the time to do all the interviews and going through this whole process. And it seems like we have an excellent candidate on our hand. And I would entertain a motion to appoint Jill Barger to a, for our zoning administrator for a three-year term to expire December 1st, 2023.
So moved.
Lee Gustafson's the motion. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Jeff Holden is the second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Nope. It's been approved. And Jill, welcome aboard and thank you.
I'm glad.
I'd just like to make a couple comments.
Go ahead, Peter.
Real quick.
Go ahead, Peter.
All right. We really all, a big debt of gratitude for Kathy. She kind of stepped right into the hot seat just right off the bat and picked up where things were left and pulled them all together. And this is a harder year. And you'd think we were looking at some numbers earlier this year. And we're at double the building permits from last year. So, there's a lot more traffic going through the office. And she managed to pick everything up and get the pieces together. It is, it is our hope that Kathy and Jill can work together. And then Kathy can show her the ropes. And then we can work like I've been working with Kathy to pick up any pieces and put them together. But I, I think this is by and far our best candidate, and I thank the board for their time. And Kathy writes a much better letter than I do.
Thank you both. And Kathy, really, thank you, Kathy, for sending that. It's been great to have you here.
Yeah.
And it's DM for Jill.
Absolutely.
Hi, Cap. And I, and Peter, I'd like to echo the sentiments that you said with Kathy. It seems like we're always saying something to that effect with Kathy when it comes to helping the town out in all different ways and stuff. She's always there for this town. Thank you very much. Anything else? We're all set with that.
All right.
Okay.
Great.
Welcome aboard, Jill. Now, our next item is, oh, wow. We already did the new items, the future agendas, right?
You did. Yes.
Yep.
So, we're going to adjourn our select board meeting and go into our water, wastewater commissioners meeting.
So, I make a motion to adjourn the select board meeting? All right.
Second.
So, leaves the motion, leaves the second. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, that meeting is adjourned. And we're going to take about three, four minutes, and then we'll start our water wastewater commissioners meeting. See you in about three minutes.
Four minutes, five.